Councilmember Doug Young has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Young?
Please join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council September 12, 2013. It's wonderful to see a number of people in the audience, and we'll have an explanation for that right now. Mr. Gilli, if you would take the chair. I'm going to step down just for a minute for a presentation.
It's my pleasure, man. Thirteen and a half years I've never got sick before. It's nice.
At that project.
Councilmembers, it's indeed a pleasure tonight to be here to dedicate a bridge in our community to someone who has been more of a bridge, someone like a giant pillar in our community and in our state for a number of years. And I think it's a great opportunity to recognize someone who gave to our city and gave to our state, and is certainly one that we can look up to and one that we can be proud of. And I'm talking of no other person than Commissioner Bill Jones, the former police commissioner for the city of Murfreesboro. Commissioner, if you would, step up here beside me with your lovely bride. Any of you who have ever gone out by Sulphur Springs Road know there's a beautiful home out there where Bill lives and Betty, and we're thrilled to have you here tonight. And we want to name the bridge over, I guess it's the bridge over the railroad and the creek and the old landfill, and it's a gateway to our gateway area in Murfreesboro for you, Bill. And you've got some other family members here. You might want to have them come join us up here. Let's get everybody up here. I think you've got, is that, this is your much older brother. Is that right?
Yeah, much older brother, that's him. I'll tell you a story about that.
I bet you will. Why don't you introduce all these folks?
Okay, of course I'll introduce my wife for sixty years, childhood sweetheart and the only wife I've had, so that's, she's been my backbone. And then I'll go into my son, he's probably here close, Ed, he's with the TBI, he's deputy director over there, has been for years, and his wife, Dr. Cindy Jones, and son, grandson Lee, and their daughters, Beth and Al, if I get this right, Marat. And then my daughter sitting back here, this pretty little girl, and that's her friend, that's Patricia, Patricia Bloomfield, and her friend here is Wayne Irving. Get all these names right. And then my brother sitting back here is pastor, he's been pastor for forty-plus years, he still is in Nashville, Donson, and had a good career there. And this is his friend, Joanne Luna. And so I guess if I missed anybody, I've been pretty good, didn't I?
We have the pleasure tonight of giving you a fact summary of what will be put across the bridge at Medical Center Parkway as it approaches Broad Street. And you know, that's pretty well the new nerve center of our town. And I don't want you to go out there and sit and look at it, so I'm going to give you this so you can take it home and hold on to it, probably put it in the bedroom somewhere close where when he's laying down, he can see it up on the wall. But for those of you who don't know, Mr. Jones was a highway patrolman for a number of years, was a colonel in the Highway Patrol, and then became commissioner of safety for the state of Tennessee. And then, when he retired, fortunately, we were able to get him to come to Murfreesboro and take over as police commissioner. And you did a tremendous job. You gave our department courage. You trained so many people who lead our department today in such an effective manner that we have a tremendous police department because of your work and your legacy, Bill. I think it's altogether fitting and proper that we should name this bridge the Commissioner Bill Jones Bridge.
God.
Here you go. You can take the microphone.
Okay. I'm glad I've got this. I carry it over to Hardee's now, and show this over there, and they won't believe that, you know. Some of them said I was coming down here the other morning, and one of the councilmen's out there, and I asked him what this was going to be, and he wouldn't tell anybody, you know. So, and I didn't either, so I said, "Well, you know, we'll just be surprised when we get down here." But I want to thank you all so much, and this means so much to me and my family, and I'm just honored to take this and carry it home with me. And get out there the bridge. I told Chief Christman, I talked to him, and I think I told the mayor, I said, "Does this give me a right? Maybe I set me a little place out there, and I can take up a little toll bridge out there." Chief Christmas, Chief Chris said, "I don't know whether I'd say that or not."
I think if you will remember, our police department sits out there by that bridge, and they have a kind of a toll.
You know, they do. You're right, Mayor. I'll make sure I don't speed when I go out through there. I go under the speed limit.
Well, we're proud for you, and I'll thank Ed and appreciate all of you all being here with us. And if you want to...
I want to say one, just a word or two, I'm not going to speak over thirty minutes. No, I just want to say, I've always been proud of Murfreesboro. I came here in 1957 in the Highway Patrol, and I'm going to make this short. And Murfreesboro just accepted me and my family, and of course, we had the family after we got here, you know, me and my wife, we came here, and we strangers, and it was just friends. I've always had a lot of friends here in Murfreesboro, and they've always, you know, when you're friends, they take care of you. It's kind of like putting, I guess, a turtle on a fence post, you know. He didn't get there by himself, and I certainly didn't get where I did myself. Hadn't been from how many friends that you, I sure wouldn't have had the accomplishments I've had. And, but I want to say to you, I'm so proud of the mayor and the councilmen here, and always have been. You know, I came back to Murfreesboro, when a governor came in, I was in. Of course, you know, sometimes they change commissioner, colonels out, and my quarter offered me the colonel's job back, but, and it paid about twice what the job did here, but I decided to come back home. And I was so glad. And the reason I came home is because the same reason now is that the council and the mayor here has always been honest up front and wanted to do what was right. I've never seen any of them do anything wrong. And it goes along with everybody I'm talking about, and all the mayors and all the councilmen. But I'm so proud to call Murfreesboro my home, and thank you so very much for this. And I know you need to get on the program. I could probably talk a little longer, but I'll stop. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones are Bill to me, my friend that I drink coffee with every week. And I just want to say personally, thank you, how much you mean to me personally, because you're a wonderful leader and you're a wonderful representative for our community. And before your family all gets away, I want them to know that there's not a week goes by that you don't brag on every one of them. I know you're extremely proud of them, and you've got a wonderful family, and thank you so much for your friendship and what you've done for our city.
Thank you, and I'll certainly brag on all of y'all when I leave here.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right. What a well-deserved honor, and we certainly appreciate the commissioner and his family and their presence in our chamber tonight and their presence across our community. Councilmembers, you have before you your consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to review it, it's quite a lengthy one. Are there any questions, comments concerning our consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Manson Pike to residential multifamily sixteen, RM sixteen district.
Move for approval.
Mr. Young, Mr. Gilli, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Manson Pike to residential multifamily sixteen, RM sixteen district.
Move for passage on second reading.
Mr. Young, Mr. Gilli, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along South Malloy Lane to heavy industrial HI district.
Move for passage on second reading.
Mr. Young, Mr. Gilli, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone areas located along East Main Street and Arnett Street to highway commercial CH district.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Young and Mr. McFarland, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage also on second reading an ordinance annexing an area located along Veterans Parkway and adopt for the same a plan of services.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Gilli, Mr. Young, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And for the same reasons, there is an amendment to an ordinance to add Thomas L. Reed Jr.'s name as applicant on this ordinance, whereas before it was Mary Kay Wright. Is there a motion to the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman and Mr. Young, on the amendment, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And then we'll consider for passage on second reading as amended, an ordinance to zone an area located along Veterans Parkway as highway commercial CH district simultaneous with annexation.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And for the same reasons, there is an amendment to an ordinance to add Thomas L. Reed Jr.'s name as applicant on this ordinance, whereas before it was Mary Kay Wright. Is there a motion to the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman and Mr. Young, on the amendment, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider amendments to an ordinance regarding parking violation penalties. Mr. Crumley?
Mayor and council, before you is the original edition of the ordinance that was proposed by staff as you considered your budget, which would have changed the first ticket around the square downtown from $2 to $5. We're suggesting to you an amendment tonight which would make that first ticket $3 rather than $5. That seemed to be the consensus of the various groups that we dealt with downtown. We're not proposing, and the groups did not propose, any change for the second and third violations. The dollar amounts on those have increased from where they are today, proposing $10 and $25 on one ticket, $25 and $40 tickets on two tickets. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Crumley? Compliment you on the compromise that I think you came to when all the parties got together that were involved, and I move for passage.
There's still a lot of questions about parking around downtown as a whole, but I think most of those are management issues and how we perform our duties enforcing them, and won't require any further council action.
I think there was a lot of good public involvement and input in this, and I appreciate the community sharing their concerns.
Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Crumley, I know we had talked about something that we had even had several suggestions with somehow, and I guess, Mr. Richardson shares this may be a good question, about a Rover route that may, in the winter, that would stop at certain places and drop individuals off from work at the garage or where have you. Have we progressed on that any at all?
We have not at this time. There were issues about the routes that our employees take as they go through the downtown and first record people in parking spaces. There were issues about the time of day and how regular and precise we were. There were questions about, should we change from the one-hour and two-hour parking that's downtown now to shorter times in some areas and longer times in others? There weren't any real consensus on those items that we could see or hear, so for right now, we've left those as they are. I think we will still come back and work with our police department to see if we can be more efficient in the way we go through downtown. But any changes that we make will provide plenty of advance notice to all the folks who work and own businesses in the downtown area.
All right, you have a motion by Mr. Smotherman. Is there a second regarding this amendment?
I'll second his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Motion, second, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing for a zoning application to amend a PRD for 91.5 acres located along Veterans Parkway. Welcome, Mr. A. Lot.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the council. During its remediation on September 4th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the item that you just read for a planned development on Veterans Parkway. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. We need to schedule a public hearing for that.
All right, Ms. McKinnon?
Mayor, I would suggest October 10th.
October 10th, council members? You have October the 10th.
Move to set a public hearing, October the 10th. Is that what you want?
That's exactly. October the 10th. All right, Mr. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Motion, second, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And consider now for passage on second reading as amended, an ordinance amending Chapter 32 Traffic Section 32-2101 regarding parking violation penalties. Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing for a zoning application to amend a PRD for 91.5 acres located along Veterans Parkway. Welcome, Mr. A. Lot.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the council. During its remediation on September 4th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the item that you just read for a planned development on Veterans Parkway. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. We need to schedule a public hearing for that.
All right, Ms. McKinnon?
Mayor, I would suggest October 10th.
October 10th, council members? You have October the 10th.
Move to set a public hearing, October the 10th. Is that what you want?
That's exactly. October the 10th. All right, Mr. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Motion, second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. A. Lot. All right, at this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Transportation Director to approve an agreement with Atmos Energy, AT&amp;T, Comcast, Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, and Murfreesboro Electric Department for utility relocations for the Broad and Memorial Separated Grade Intersection Improvement Project, and approve a separate agreement with Comcast. Welcome, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. As noted, I do have a couple of agreements for you this evening to facilitate the utility relocations within the Broad and Memorial project. As a little background, of course, intersection improvements have been under development for another year's, and both the city of Murfreesboro and Department of Transportation have been very much involved in the development of this project. As you know, this project entails the construction of a bridge over Broad Street, as well as the addition of turn lanes on Broad Street that would projected, would be projected to help with the traffic congestion certainly in the interim period as well as the future years. This project is currently programmed in the October 18th bid letting from the Department of Transportation this year. As a function of the project development, TDOT designed the project and acquired the right-of-way for the construction elements of the roadway project, but did not acquire easements for the required relocation of the existing utilities. In order to minimize the disruptions to the area businesses and to accelerate the time required to, for design, coordination, and easement acquisitions, the city offered to facilitate the design and easement acquisition on behalf of all of the utilities within the project limits. A part of the city's offer entailed an agreement sharing the design and easement acquisition costs associated with the overall utility relocations efforts within this project. One of the major elements of the project is that all the utilities within the project limits will be relocated underground as part of the construction project, which will exponentially complicate the utility relocation portion of this project. On April 18th of this year, the city council approved a contract between the city and Wiser Company to provide a comprehensive utility relocation design, provide easement descriptions and appraisals, and overall utility coordination amongst the various utilities. Since execution of this contract in April, the design has been completed, the easement descriptions completed, and appraisals completed for approximately 27 separate tracks, all of this within approximately five months. So there's been a lot of effort put into this to make this October bid letting date. Atmos Energy, AT&amp;T, the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, and the Murfreesboro Electric Department have executed the agreement for utility relocations for the Broad and Memorial O'Forth Separated Grade document, and that is in your package, and that's one of the documents that is before you this evening for consideration. Comcast, on the other hand, they executed this agreement, but they have contended that their franchise agreement with the city allows them access to the easements without cost to them. City staff disagrees with this position, with the opinion that while the franchise agreement does allow them access to the existing easements and right-of-way to install their infrastructure, it does not, however, require the city to actually expend effort and funds to obtain new easements for their benefit. Rather than further delay this project, Comcast has agreed to execute the same agreement as has the other utility companies. They, under this, under separate agreement, Comcast will participate in the cost of utility relocations, but reserves the right to further debate as to whether they have the rights to access to easements acquired for this project and no Comcast to, no cost to Comcast, excuse me, under the franchise agreement and/or the cable, I see as cable ordinances. And we all agreed that the relatively small amount that we're talking about is somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000, and we certainly did not want this issue to hold up, what is basically a $30 million project. So we have agreed to disagree and debate the issue at a later date. You have before you the impact of this project. It's about 727,000, and it's divided pro rata between the participating utilities, most within about the $100,000 range, for the acquisition of easements, sign relocations, the design efforts, and so forth. The cost, the pure cost to the city is for the city's fiber optic cable that interconnects our CCTV, traffic signals, and so forth, and is being paid through the 2012 TML loan under the acquisition of property line items. This project is programmed in all the regional budgets, it's also programmed in the city's current capital improvement program budget. This program was also approved by the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Board on April 27th, as well as the MED board on, excuse me, I said, April, I meant August 27th, and MED board on August the 28th. With that said, I would recommend the approval of the agreement for cost sharing for the utility relocations for Broad and Memorial O'Forth Grade Separation between the city of Murfreesboro and all the mentioned utilities. I would additionally recommend approval of the separate agreement between Comcast of Nashville to LLC and city of Murfreesboro. Be glad to answer any questions you may have concerning this project.
Are there questions for Mr. Richardson regarding this recommendation?
I can't imagine how hard it was to herd all those cats together and put them in a common ditch and then make it work.
It has been quite an effort, and I think we owe a lot of thanks to a lot of folks. Certainly, Wiser Company has done a yeoman's task in pulling all this together in such a short amount of time. I would be remiss without thanking our assistant city attorney for all the efforts that he's had in putting together the agreements and assisting in this, and I appreciate everybody working together to try to pull this off in this very short amount of time.
Not to mention Mr. Richardson, who's had most of the headaches that's been involved.
And more to come.
And more to come. As we know, people've got your number.
If I could, while I am here, I would like to mention, I guess for the public benefit, is that sometime between now and the October 18th bid letting, we will be having advertised public meeting for the benefit of the public to further explain some of the specific elements of the project, the phasing of the project, the timeframe, how we plan on going about handling the traffic during construction, just the overall look of the project, and many other things, and hopefully be in a position to answer the questions that the public may have on their mind, so that, notification of that will be forthcoming.
I'm assuming those will be ongoing after the project is underway also.
There will be a lot of opportunity for public input, and there will be a lot of coordination through the Department of Transportation, and certainly, we will assist in that effort as well. We are working very closely with their public relations personnel.
Mayor Dana is on the chicken circuit. He is speaking to groups about this. He spoke to Main Street the other day. He'll be speaking to the only downtown business association in a week or so, so he's out in the community, letting them know what the plans are and features and benefits of this very big project.
Excellent.
I'm wanting to get regular updates on this, and as we've talked to TDOT officials, they're even looking at the USEC technology to try to inform the motoring public about what's going on.
even looking at the USEC technology to try to inform the motoring public about where they're going to be at, where detours are going to be, so things like Facebook and Twitter now be part of a project like that so they can help keep everybody informed.
Very good. All right. You have this recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion, second. Mr. Young, Mr. Smotherman, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board as to adopting a resolution to award the low bid to Judy Construction Company for construction of the Sinkin Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks Building Phase 4C to be funded through the state's revolving fund loan program, and to approve Smith-Sackman-Reed Engineering Work Order for Resident Project Representative, RPR Inspection Services for the Sinkin Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks Building Phase 4C. Mr. Gore, welcome. I understand you have a guest tonight.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Before I ask for your consideration of the agenda items, I'd like to introduce a gentleman, Mr. Steve Tate. We advertised for the position of Effective Utility Management Coordinator. You've probably heard the acronym EUM from me several times. Basically, EUM is 10 attributes ranging from product quality to customer satisfaction, operational optimization, and water resource adequacy, and there are five management principles along with that, strategic planning, measurement, continuous improvement. Mr. Tate has over 35 years of experience in the water and sewer industry, and we're looking, very excited to have him on board to start implementing a little bit, bridge building between our divisions within the department. So, I'll let him say a couple of words if you can.
I don't want to say too much. I know you've got a long agenda, but I am pleased to be here, be a part of the department. So far, I'm drinking from a fire hose, so I've got an awful lot of information to pull together. There's a lot going on, as you know, but I'm very, I have a very high impression of those that I've met so far. It's a great department. We follow a great legacy and appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
And make sure everything's working smoothly in the Water and Sewer Department. Thank you. Glad you're here.
And I want to thank the council, too, for their support in this initiative. This is a, an industry standard that we are trying to follow and, and just become better. With that, I'll go into the agenda items. Excuse me, I've got too, too many things up here, but I did want to come back and just take a moment to reacquaint the council with the projects that we have ongoing. If I can get this to come up. As you see in your packet, we had three major projects that we are funding under the state revolving fund program. We had those estimated at $33.4 million. The Southwest Regional Pump Station, the Southwest Regional Force Main, and the Sinkin Creek Headworks Project. When you add the bid, the actual bid results with the design fees and the inspection fees that we're requesting, we came in approximately $26.2 million. When you take into account the principal forgiveness of $2.87 million, it looks like our debt service that we would incur is going to be roughly $23.3 million, or about $10 million under what we had programmed into our financial model. But I wanted to take an opportunity, again, just to kind of show where we're starting. This is a picture of Old Fort Parkway, south of the golf course, and across from Stones River Mall, where we are starting the process with the Southwest Regional Pump Station. Basically, and this is going to go quick, this is going to pump sewage directly to the Sinkin Creek Plant, which is off of Thompson Lane and Planton Drive. The project that we're requesting approval for tonight is the third leg and final leg of the three projects I mentioned. It is the Headworks, which is a screening facility that takes all the debris out before the wastewater gets to the, to the biological process in the plant. This table kind of summarizes, and it's in your board packet. I'm highlighting in blue there the Headworks Project, and I think there's a Resolution 13R24 that's part of the SRF approval process that basically requests that we award this project to Judy Construction, who was low bid in the amount of $7.8 million, and that was significantly under, in the range of about $3 million under the estimated cost. So, we would request that approval of that resolution.
All right. Questions regarding this?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, thank you. Please, this is to adopt the resolution to award the low bid to Judy Construction Company. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Mr. Gore.
Yes, the second part of this request involves approving an engineering work order with Smith-Sackman-Reed for resident project representation, which is basically resident inspection. With the Headworks, it's got mechanical, electrical, controls, and instrumentation systems as well as significant structural and building crafts associated with it. It's really beyond the, the skill sets that our resident inspectors have. As a note, we, we are using in-house resident inspectors to, to see the force main going in, but due to the complexity of this project, we're asking for those resident inspection services to be awarded to Smith-Sackman-Reed.
All right. Questions for Mr. Gore? If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve this engineering work order?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli and Mr. Young. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you, council.
All right. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer to repair and replace storm pipe, storm water pipe system in the Pennington Drive area and a contract for construction of Veterans Parkway Phase 2B. Mr. Griffith, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of the city council. The first item I have for you tonight is the repair and replacement of the storm water pipe system in the Pennington Drive area. Just a little background on, on that, that pipe system. It was constructed in the 1990s as part of the Thompson Square subdivision and primarily consists of a 48-inch high-density polyethylene, polyethylene or HDPE pipe, and is up to 15 feet in depth. The pipe's located within a public drainage easement in the backyards of the residences or several residences, residences along the Pennington Drive area. I've included a, a site map in your package for your information. Earlier this year, during the heavy, heavy rains in May, the engineering department received calls about flooding in the Thompson Square neighborhood, specifically, storm water was leaving the banks of a concrete ditch that feeds into this, this trunk line. The waters did recede slowly over time, but not before significant flooding had occurred, including crawl spaces of houses, heating and air conditioning units, and outside storage sheds had all been impacted by the storm water. Based on this information, staff investigated the condition of the pipe using a camera system. The video indicated that about 70 feet of the HDPE pipe had collapsed and was operating at less than 40% capacity. While the remaining video, or remaining pipe in the video did not show significant signs of failure, staff notes this is the second time that this, that a section of this trunk line has failed over the last few years. Staff contracted with SEC Incorporated perform a capacity analysis of the pipe to determine if it had sufficient capacity. The analysis was completed for a 10-year design storm, which is consistent with our current standards. The analysis indicate the pipe, not only had the pipe, the 48-inch pipe failed, that due to connections over the years, that it should be upgraded to a 54-inch pipe. SEC further recommended that it should be replaced with a reinforced concrete pipe due to its size, depth, and problems the city has experienced over the last few years with larger HDPE pipe. The total length of replacement that we're proposing to replace is 1,150 feet. A public meeting was held on Monday of this week at Lighthouse Baptist Church to discuss the project with the residents. The meeting was held to discuss the limits of the proposed construction and the, and the impact on the residents' backyard. The meeting was well-attended, and residents had, had very good questions. In general, they were very positive and appreciated the repair of the system, even though it will be an inconvenience for some time. We, we expect that the, the total project will take about 45 days to, to complete, and I would like to thank the residents that came out to the meeting. Really is, if you can imagine somebody coming in your backyard and digging a 15-foot hole about 10 feet wide, track holes, everything, it, they took it very well. Probably took it a lot better than I would have from the, from the construction. So, I appreciate their, their attendance and their attitude about the whole project. The replacement of the pipe was included in the latest capital improvement plan information that was provided to the Water and Sewer Board with initial estimate of $500,000. Our most recent estimates complete the work for about $400,000. The Water and Sewer Board did recommend approval of the project at their meeting on August 27th, and staff recommends replacement of about, about 1,150 feet, a 48-inch HDPE pipe with a 54-inch reinforced concrete pipe with funding from the working capital of the stormwater user fee. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith regarding this repair and replacement?
Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment to let Mr. Griffith know and Mr. Stacy, who came out when the flooding occurred in May, and Mr. Lyons actually came out and walked the, the ditches with us, but, and really could see the, the damage that, on people's fences and different things that where the water had just gotten so high. So, you know, and, and Mr. Mark Faust and Mark Robinson, who've continued in, in, on the Pennington Drive area, who've continued to check in, and, so they've, they've done well in letting us know about these issues, and appreciate all the hard work staff's put into this.
Thank you, sir. And I'll just follow up on, on exactly what Shane just said. Chris, you did such an excellent job of communicating to the neighborhood, and I think your presentation was wonderful that you gave to them, and clearly, their, their acceptance of it, it is for their gain in the long run to get that water out of there. So, I know the mayor and I were both at the neighborhood meeting there, and, and not only was I happy to see that they were quite harmonious about accepting it, but they, it was quite impressive, the presentation you did, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you being there.
And Mr. Griffith wouldn't say this very often, but something that we would like residents to know, and, and this is me included, because sometimes you don't know that there are easements that are on your lot, and you'll put fences and bushes and buildings that are, are in the easement, and in certain cases, when we walked up Pennington Drive, we saw where bushes had been planted in the easements that were restricting water flow, and the thing that residents sometimes would want to consider is that whatever we do on our property affects the person that's up above us, and that's really what had happened in certain, these instances. So, and the, the ground was so flat back in that area, I actually thought that the water went a different direction than it was supposed to go. So, unfortunately, in middle Tennessee, we don't have a lot of hills that we deal with, so sometimes we're figuring how to make water flow backwards. So, but thanks again for all you did on that.
Thank you, sir. Just to note, we, we do also plan, given it is folks' backyard, we do plan on restoring their backyards with sod as opposed to seeding and straw and waiting for grass to grow, and, and then also, we, several trees will be impacted. I made a commitment to the residents that, that will replace trees with a like kind. Can get the like size, but we will do it with a like kind, and they, they all seem very appreciative of that.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Mr. Young, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. So, you're going to put back hackberries and box elders and...
Now, they have a little bit nicer trees than that in those backyards.
Thank you. Glad you cleared that up. All right. As to the contract for construction of Veterans Parkway Phase 2B.
Yes, sir. The second item we have, we are, we're very excited about, the city council approved the design of Veterans Parkway, which is formerly the Southwest Loop Road in October of 2004. The route included the design extended from, with the design extended from State Route 96 with the connection there at Moreland Lane over to State Route 99, and then over, on over to a connection with Barfield Crescent Road, just pretty far, or pretty close to the, to the park entrance there. I did include a copy of the site map for, for your review. The intent of the new roadway was to provide a loop around the southwest portion of the city and alternate access to I-24 and State Route 840. This project, coupled with the widening of Joby Jackson and the section of Veterans Parkway, which is formerly the Beasley Road Interchange Project constructed by the state of Tennessee from State Route 96 to, to Burntob Road, will come, when, when all the phases are completed, will provide a four, five-lane route from I-24 extending around the southwest portion of the cities at State Route 840 and on to Burntob Road. Six bids were received on September 5th of this year for the construction of, of the Veterans Parkway section extending from Kimbrough, Kimbrough Road, Barfield Road intersection to the Kimbrough Road-St. Andrews Drive intersection. It's, it's essentially widening the Kimbrough Road section that, to, to a, to a five-lane Again, that, that section of roadway is included on the, the site map. The low total bid in the amount of $7,626,740.75 was submitted by Rollins Excavating Company from Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Rollins has completed numerous capital improvement projects for the city and is currently our annual storm water and concrete contractor. Our consultant, Wiser Company, has reviewed the bids and recommends award of the contract to them. This project, when completed, coupled with the completion of the ongoing Joby Jackson project, will, will finish the entire loop previously described. Both, both of these projects will be scheduled to be completed by December of 2015. The estimate for the construction of the project in our current capital improvement plan was $9 million, so we're about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars under budget on, on our estimate. With that, we recommend award of the contact, contract to Rollins Excavating, subject to review and approval of the agreement by, by the city attorney. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for the city engineer regarding this recommendation?
A million dollars under expectations.
Yes, sir.
Million dollars. That's, that's pretty good. Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Second.
And Mr. Gilli. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you for, Mr. Griffith, very much. Appreciate your work always. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Assistant City Manager with regards to funding for the city's schools' technology, and I note that Dr. Linda Gilbert and Mr. Gary Anderson are both here with our school system. We appreciate and welcome you being here.
Mayor and council, first, we want to thank you for your action of three weeks ago, where you approved the school's technology plan and allowed them to begin the acquisition of the machines to be installed in the classroom while giving staff at schools and us the time to do a little more research on a proper funding method for what will be time to do a little more research on a proper funding method for what will be a continuing expense of keeping up-to-date computers in our students' hands in the classroom setting. We looked at three principal methods of financing it, trying to make room in our current budget without any increases in revenue, paying for it out of our cash reserves, our debt, our fund balance, or borrowing the money short-term to pay for the computers. We're recommending to you a kind of a different mixture tonight of some of all three of those. The first point would be a split in the annual debt service payment, sixty-forty between the city's general fund and the city schools. We feel that that keeps a balance and a harmony in the way we're financing this program over the long term, keeps the commitment level and the interest of both schools and city high in this technology program. We're proposing that you would use a five-year variable rate borrowing for the approximately five-point-two million dollars of the initial purchase of these computers. That generates a debt service cost of about eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars a year. We have already made contact with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. Dollars are available. Their program is still strong. Over the last ninety days, we've seen a rapid increase in interest rates on fixed-cost borrowings. We have not seen that on the very short end in the variable rate borrowing. So on a five-year plan such as this, it makes very good sense for us to continue to utilize that variable rate tool that we have for a long time through the bond fund. The risk of short-term interest rates moving large numbers away from us is pretty slim over that five-year period. We maintain the greatest flexibility, we think, by going with this borrowing program for these computers. We looked at paying for the computers out of the fund balances of schools and the city general fund. That's going to create the potential of some cash flow problems on the school's side. They've worked very hard over the last few years to build their fund balance to a point that they no longer were having to come to Melissa for any cash borrowings over the summer to continue to keep their obligations current. We think that flexibility of borrowing this money instead of using the fund balances helps keep them in that same position. We've matched the life of the asset to the borrowing. These computers will be replaced about every five years, so maintaining that term, even though it puts a very high payout each year onto the budget of the city and the schools, again, makes sense. We're recommending to you tonight that we go back to the variable rate market for the five-point-two million dollars to fund the first phase of computers. We will work very hard to build that number into our annual budgets as we go forward so that the continuing cycle of replacing the computers is covered in the future. We're asking for the flexibility that if we run short in the operating budgets over the next five years, we can still utilize some fund balance to make up the difference in the annual debt service. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Crumlin?
No questions, Mayor, but I'd just like to thank Jim and everyone else involved in working to come up with this solution. And as we've said before to the public, this, this is not just a random request that's being made by the school system. This is coming from the federal government all the way to state down to us, is to this whole overview of things, and something that's going to have to be done.
That's probably a better question for Dr. Gilbert or Gary to answer in terms of the reasons that we're going forward with this technology program. It has some to do with the testing of the Common Core, but it has a lot more to do, I think, with the way they want to program our education with our students in the future.
I don't know. Dr. Gilbert and Gary, you might remind me, we had a, some type of effort in the last fifteen years to fund a million dollars a year in technology and to try to keep that current, and maybe that was internally administrative and not teaching-oriented, but we had a commitment to a technology fee.
And I'm, I'm going to defer to him on this one, but I think when the technology plan was first rolled out, this would have been probably, I'm going to guess, mid-nineteen nineties, maybe a little earlier than that even. And there was the intent to continue to fund that. I think part of that has been in the fund balance, and I think that's the reason that we're able to step up the plate and do what we're doing, because in addition to the technology, of course, you have the folks who have to run that technology, so we're looking at paying our IT folks. I think the impetus for this is that we have not purchased new machines since two thousand and seven, and one reason that we waited on the purchase of those machines is, there were a couple of reasons, but one is, we knew that the state was going to change when we moved to Common Core. We realized that online testing is on, right in front of us. But also, if you look at how technology has changed in the last three years, what I'm asking for now is very different than what I would have asked for even three years ago. So if we're going to prepare our students for the future, we really need this. I think the other thing that the city schools has been able to do very well is handle a lot of the capital outlay, as far as roofs and as far as air conditioners, being able to keep the pupil teacher ratio low, but still, as we grew, we were not, we didn't have to come to you all to ask for funding. But I'm going to ask Gary, if you want to add anything, feel free.
Sure. Thank you. What, what we've been doing over the last few years is to, we have built a better fund balance. We have gone and gotten interest-free loans from the state for air conditioning and infrastructure needs. We have added to our technology infrastructure, but we have not added to the in-the-classroom technology, waiting for these decisions to be made. We have been very successful in not having to come back and ask for roof money and stuff like that. We've done it out of our operating expenditures. The school board had asked for us to set aside roughly three hundred and some odd thousand dollars every year, and so with time, as it's been built up now, we've been able to have, have the reserves that we do have. And so that's kind of where we are today, and that's why we're here asking for this.
Not away from this technology, this million dollars a year you were going to try to keep a fund there, or...
When I came into this position six years ago, the impetus that I had heard from the board was they wanted three hundred something thousand, so I was not aware of a million-dollar commitment at that time.
Okay, that was one of the early ones. Then, so this debt service is going to be about half a million dollars a year to the school board, is that correct? That you're going to try to take out of your...
On the sixty-forty split, the city's share would be the sixty percent, or a little over a half a million dollars a year, with the school system adding about three hundred thousand dollars a year to their debt service.
Okay, so you'll, so that, so this will be the three hundred thirty thousand dollars, something like that.
And, and we've been, we've been fortunate. In fact, Mr. Anderson reminds me on a regular basis that next year's going to be tough, and I'm aware of that. But, but I think if you look at what we've been able to do over the last ten years, we have been able to shave every year, and that's, that's my hope this year. It will be done.
All right. Council members, any other questions, comments regarding?
Ms. Gilbert, would you tell us what we're buying?
I'll be happy to. Student learning, but we won't go there. That's my answer. We're looking at, we're looking at purchasing iPads in grades K and one. We're looking at purchasing laptops in, in grades two through six, because we really feel like with our children, in second grade, we're preparing them for third grade. Part of the impetus for this is the testing that will occur. Actually, we have, we're going to be a pilot site for some testing in February, but really the testing, the tough testing will happen next year, because at that point, all through sixth graders will be testing online. So we're, we're looking at, we feel like with the iPads, one to every two, and then the laptops, one to every two students, what that will enable is true use of the technology. It's, it's very difficult when you have only three or four computers in a classroom, and you have twenty, twenty-two kids, twenty-three kids, to really embed that technology use as much as you or I would use it. So it will be a transforming of the way that we teach, and when I talk to teachers, what I hear from them is the individualization of instruction. And we hear that all the time, but I think that the computers will enable that, so that you can have a classroom where students are paired together for learning, or where teachers can actually bring in computers from the classroom next to them and have a full complement of computers. And I think that'll really be a blessing for our students. Again, our whole goal in Murfreesboro City Schools is to prepare children for the future. And so when you think about what you and I do every day, I'm ill-pressed to go without a computer, and, and they have to learn it young. We can't magically say, gee, I hope when they get in seventh grade or when they graduate from high school, they're going to be able to handle the technology. But we do want them to learn to research, we want them to learn to write, we want them to learn to collaborate with that, because that's what we do every day.
Thank you.
All right, other questions, comments?
You got months for that one, don't you?
I just want to make sure that I have a clear understanding of the mandate that I feel like we've got placed on us. Is there actually a state mandate that says we got to do this?
We will be testing, we will be testing online. We will have half of our, well, we have some of our schools that would be piloting paper pencil. They want to see how that works, but we will have some of our schools this year that will actually be piloting online. Our writing assessment this year will be online, and all of our testing is scheduled to go online next year.
And this is all part of the Common Core curriculum, is that right?
Yeah, well, it's part of the park assessment of the Common Core. Right. It's the assessment of it. But the bigger picture, I think, Mr. Smotherman, is really, when you think about that our students are trying to work off a few computers that were purchased in two thousand and seven, if we want them to really advance, then we need this.
I, I, I agree with you and understand what you're saying. I just don't think that we can buy a car for every kid that takes driver's education.
I understand that.
And it, and therefore, it's the same perspective for me. I don't know that we have to have a computer for every student in the classroom or every other student to, to train them on how to operate a computer. I honestly think that most kids have acquired that skill now, almost before they get to school, as far as the functionality of the piece of equipment. The, as far as the ability to test with it, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the ultimate motive of where we would be heading towards, who directs the testing and where does the testing come from? It's the part that scares me more than anything about it.
The testing is different, you're right. It's, it's more of, you have two, you may have two texts that two children will, that a child will read, and then they're going to write about it. So you're right, the requirements are tough.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Do we feel like that we, we've got a plan in place that as we bring this new hardware online, that we're going to be able to acclimate everyone to using those as far as our, our staff, and so we don't have things sitting around not being used?
Right. Our, our teachers this year, we will go ahead and keep, we're in Apple District right now, they will go ahead and keep their Apples this year, along with getting their Dells, so that they can get used to that and keep what teaching, their teaching tools that they have on the Apple, so that they can gradually work with that. But we're already laying out a plan of professional development. We'll give our teachers, we're looking at a full, full day of training in February, and in addition, we too, we do have two tech coaches that will be in those schools all the time and working with teachers to acclimate them to using computers, yes.
Mr. Young, do you want to let them, let you know when they have that full day of training?
I'd need two full days of training.
All right, you have this recommendation before you for funding. Zero motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Second.
Mr. Gilli, thank you. Thank you all for being here, and I'm sorry of the lateness of the hour, but we appreciate the discussion and information.
We appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We'll now consider the recommendations of the city manager with regards to a proposed draft focus and framework document for the classification and compensation study. Mr. Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of city council. You will recall in August, Fox Lawson came to Murfreesboro to conduct a workshop on classification and compensation systems and studies. The purpose of them coming to Murfreesboro was to help all of us better understand classification and compensation. Fox Lawson subsequently the next day had one-on-one sessions with the city council and came to our staff meeting to talk to us about what our target ought to be. Fox Lawson took the feedback from their individual meetings with you and developed the document that's in your, your packet. So let me first of all, maybe start off by saying what this document is not. This is not the pay plan. This document is not the pay study. This document does not set anyone's pay for the city. But what it does do, we believe, is hopefully set a target for us to develop a classification and compensation system. Now, this is going to take every bit of a year, so this is really a day one in a year-plus-long journey for us. There's going to be lots of opportunity for input and feedback, and that input and feedback starts tonight. We've taken what we heard from you all and developed this draft document, but we're really looking to you all this evening to talk to us, to see if there's anything in here that you would like to change. Once we would get any changes you might have to the document, what we would recommend that we do is use this as the basis to go competitively select a consultant that would come in and use this as the target. Again, this sets no final decisions for you this evening, but because there's certainly various options in classification and compensation, we need to give our consultants some direction to get started. As we go through this process, we'll be having various checkpoints where we could stop, pause, and get feedback from you all and from staff. So what I'd like to do is maybe take about five minutes and go over a quick presentation. I know Mr. Gore's here. He certainly has challenged all of us on presentations, and what I've got here just tries to very quickly summarize this framework document. So we will start with kind of where we are and where we will be going. The current plan that we use was developed in two thousand and four by Burris and Thompson. It's got a market data approach. City council established the goals for that study, much like we're suggesting tonight, where city council said, we want to be at the sixtieth percentile. And just so we all understand what that means, is that means the city is going to be setting its pay and benchmarking its pay, where it's paying more than sixty percent of people in the marketplace. Conversely, that means forty percent are paying more, but certainly a very aggressive goal. Many of the pay plans set that target at the fiftieth percentile, so when city council set that at the sixtieth percentile, that resulted in higher pay for our city employees. Because it's a market-based approach, we've done a number of updates. We've had actually four updates during that since the original approval. Each year, we present to you a recommendation on what to do with compensation for the city, and over the last three years, city council's funded three-and-a-half percent pay increases for our city employees, and we look to other cities in Tennessee. This means Murfreesboro leads the state of Tennessee in the increases that we've provided to our employees, and on average, our benefits are fifty-five percent of our, our salary. Again, these are very strong points about our current compensation system. But we know there's been some challenges with the system that we have currently. One issue that we're aware of, and I think you all have heard from employees, is we've got an issue of compression. That is supervisors and the people they supervise and their pay bumping together. People who have come into the organization and been here, perhaps two or three years, making the same as someone who enters the organization this year. So for some of these reasons, we understand it's perhaps time to take a look at our classification and compensation, and finally, one of the things that we've heard from, from staff and council has been, you know, our current pay plan pays the job, not necessarily the person. So in other words, it doesn't really recognize performance or effort in a way that you see in other employers. So we think it's time for us to take a look at this. We, in drafting the document, we saw a couple of things that really jumped off the page at the very beginning of the document, and it said that employees are critical to achieving the city's mission. We all know that. We heard that from each and every one of you. We've heard that from our leadership team. We know how important it's going to be for the city to employ and retain qualified and productive people. The work of the city and the awards that are received are achieved, because we've got some hard-working people who lead their fields and continue to innovate and serve our citizens. So one of the things that we want to do with a new classification and compensation system is to reward and recognize our employees for success. We know we want this system to be open, and it needs to be equitable and fair. So goal one in the document that's before you is to classify the work. I know as we went through the workshop with Bruce Lawson, he spent a good deal of time on the classification component of it. I know it's oftentimes called a pay plan or a pay study, but, you know, I've been very very... careful as we talk about it to talk about the classification and compensation piece. So the classification is really the bones. It becomes the framework and the structure, and it's hugely critical for us to accomplish what it is that we're trying to achieve. So when we classify the work, it means we're going to try to reflect meaningful and measurable differences in the level of work. And that's going to involve setting up that structure. One of the things Mr. Lawson pointed out to us is that we have 285 job classes for roughly 900 employees, while the armed forces have just 26 classes for over 2 million employees. Again, we've created a number of these classifications that have created some of that overlap and have contributed to the compression issue. The document walks through some goals in terms of how we develop the new classification and compensation system, how we transition from where we're at today to the new system, and then some language in there about how it would be maintained. And lastly, in that first goal, it talks about reclassifications and new jobs. Now, this is something that has presented itself each year during budget, and we really want to take, step back and take a fresh look at how we deal with employees' jobs who have changed, or perhaps we may create a new position. This year, new positions included the EUM coordinator. You just met Mr. Tate. We had a new position for an IT help desk, a new position for a purchasing manager. So as the work of the city changes and we create new positions, this document and our system needs to be able to accommodate that. And so the document sets forth some goals for how that might happen. Goal two was competitive total compensation. That message was loud and clear from city council. We want to continue to see the city's pay be very competitive. And that means we've got to have internal and external equity. And that's one of the challenges when we look at pay, is we know we need to be competitive with the marketplace, but we also have to look internally to make sure that there's a sense of proportion to it. And this is going to require ongoing indexing to the market. So what Mr. Lawson helped us with is really looking at targeting the labor markets. Our labor markets are somewhat different for certain positions. Some positions we recruit, you know, right here in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, and there's other positions that that circle goes out a little bit larger as you start looking for where talent is, where the people who have the qualifications and experience are. Many of our jobs get filled right here in Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, or middle Tennessee. But there's been some positions where we've done, you know, regional and national recruitment. So we want to recognize that as we begin to try to target the labor markets that we compete for. Additionally, we need to find a method to evaluate the jobs. Again, this is going to involve some employee input and review. Pay ranges are certainly going to be one of the things in the document we're all going to be paying very close attention to. This is the one where the employees really start to take a look at it and compare to their peers and their knowledge of it. And what is included in there is a continuation of that 60th percentile, that on average the pay grades, ranges, or bands would approximate the 60th percentile of the market salary data. There's a couple of terms in the document that I just wanted to point out very quickly because they become part of the framework for how a consultant's going to go out and price jobs, compare them, and deliver a report to us. So we've got a pay range, which is really the minimum and maximum pay. We currently have that now, but in terms of understanding the language used in there. The job rate is the center of the pay range, and the job rate for some specified public safety positions actually goes from the minimum to the maximum pay, and I'll explain that in just a second. Pay progression is really going to be how our employees are going to move from the salary or the pay they come in at year after year, and how they are going to move forward through the plan. Mr. Lawson has pointed out, and we certainly have seen, that there's a difference in how public safety employees are treated in this. We've got many employees, they may be police officers or firefighters, that may spend their entire career at that job title, and they serve our community with honor and distinction. There may not be, they may choose to serve in that role. And so the ability for us to treat them differently, we believe, gives them more room for overall job growth and a career service, where other positions, there may be some more opportunities for upward advancement. There isn't anything in this document that sets forth a number of steps or the amount of the step increases, and that all would be determined through the market data. And then progression for some of the non-safety positions really breaks it down into two different components. As you can see in the document, there is a skill development range. What we heard from you all and what we heard from staff was during your first several years with the city in a particular position, you're really learning and growing and getting to understand that job. So you're acquiring the skills. And so under this hybrid approach Mr. Lawson had talked to us about, those annual increases with the satisfactory performance are going to occur on a regular basis. However, when you hit that job rate or that midpoint, that's where we're going to start to transition toward a more of a performance-based approach. So once you got to that midpoint or that job rate, the movement beyond that would be based on successful performance. Now, I know some of our staff may look at that and say, does that mean my step goes away? Well, you're going to have to earn, you know, based on your performance, but it may be an increase that's greater than the current step plan. So again, we haven't set any of those numbers, but I think the idea here is, is that we've got a ton of employees who are high achievers, go-getters, and do a great job for us, and we want to give them the opportunity to be rewarded. Again, one of the things we heard consistently was, we really want to look to see if we can pay the person and not just the job. And lastly, the performance management piece. You know, much of the world has gone to performance management, and we know this is a major culture change for the organization. This is not something that gets turned on on day one, but I think it's really a part of the process for us to move toward asking our supervisors to do the work that a supervisor needs to do, and that's to talk to their employees about the things that they're doing well, and if there's areas they need for improvement, to help them along and to coach them up. So a performance management piece is part of what we're looking toward. This again goes to the pay the person and not just the job, and that there would be a link to pay. But consistently, we heard from our employees, from our leadership team, and from the council, this kind of culture change means we've got to take our time and we've got to do it right. It's going to require a good deal of training, a lot of communication, before we would ever get to the point where there'd actually be a physical link to pay. So we know this is one area that's going to require a lot of work. We're not recommending an evaluation form to you this evening. What we're saying is that we see this as a target for us to move toward, and one that's going to take quite a bit of work for all of us. You know, and I'll give you, for instance, one of the examples Mr. Lawson used in one of the interviews I was with was, if we move toward a performance evaluation system, perhaps the first year, that evaluation isn't necessarily linked to pay. It's a dry run, where you have the opportunity to work through the process, but if the supervisor hadn't quite gotten it, the employee isn't necessarily penalized because the supervisor hadn't quite gotten that part right. And that gives us an opportunity then to do a look back and coach up that supervisor. Again, we want to be careful with that part of it. But, you know, it's been interesting to note, as we've talked about this, you know, I've had a number of employees actually look forward to this part of it. They want to get that kind of feedback, and they see opportunities for the hard work that they do and the excellent job that they do, that they could perhaps be better rewarded. The employee engagement is certainly something that's going to be critical to the success of this. I think you heard Mr. Lawson say to you, think about how much communication you wanted to do, and if you double it, it's still not going to be enough. So we know we're going to have to work hard to keep our employees in the loop. Process like this typically is going to involve some review of job descriptions, surveys from our employees in terms of what they actually do, panels where employees are grouped together to talk about the work that they do, to make sure that the classification piece is done correctly, and that we want to make sure that we're sharing information generously. We met with Mr. Lilly this week, and he's already starting a demo of the city's Intranet, which will be named Murfrees Web. We think that'll be a great way for us to push information out to our employees about the study. And that, you know, upon adoption of a document, we would use this really as the heart of the selection process, to say, this is the target we want to shoot at, because there may be some firms out there who are better suited to setting up something that looks like what we're describing in this document than some others. So this gives us a better ability, we think, to go out and select a consultant. And at that, Mayor, I think I'll pause and see what questions you might have, or what suggestions you might have to change the document.
All right, council members, I know this is a lot of information, and you've had it for a relatively short period of time. I don't know that we could gain any greater understanding with a longer period of time, but it is quite involved. And you may have some questions, comments now, or you may want to suggest that you have a little further time to review this before you consider approving this type of recommendation. But anyway, are there any questions or comments regarding Mr. Lyons' presentation or this document and the way he presents to go about what he's doing?
Rob, I know you've put a tremendous amount of work into that, where we're at right now, and it's going to be quite some time, I know, before we actually get this implemented. I think you're, I actually like the plan that you have, and I know you did individual studies with each council member, and I've already told you after I viewed it the first time that I felt like I was viewing the suggestions that I had made, because it really, it really felt comfortable for me. I think that it is moving in the right direction. It does give accountability. It does give evaluations based on high performers and honestly, low performers. And I think that it's definitely a move in the right direction. I kind of like the idea of a dry run to the first year myself, because I think that it will really give us the opportunity not to mistreat an individual employee, just because, like you say, maybe their manager's not one who'd been coached up yet to the level that they're capable of performing what the expectations of the entire package would contain. So I'm comfortable with what you've put together, and, you know, I'll let the other members speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Others wishing to speak?
Plan is very well thought out, well researched, put together first step to where we need to be going and what is going to be a long, detailed process. I agree with their plan that he had to say. I appreciate all the work that's been done.
The HR, legal managers office, spent a good deal of time working on the draft that had been prepared here, so I want to give some credit to the rest of the team.
All right, you have this focus and framework classification and compensation before you, and I've realized, again, it's a lot to take on, but are you willing to allow the city manager to proceed on the basis of this recommendation?
And just so we're clear, Mayor, the next step is going to be, you know, the competitive sealed proposal that would then go out. We'll review those and bring a recommendation back to the city council probably 60 to 90 days from now, where we're going to be recommending a firm for you all to actually kick off the study. So, you know, what happens with the adoption of this document is not any sort of final decision. It just helps us move the process along and start the next step in it, which is to go find a consultant to help us.
Mayor, if that's the case, I would move that we approve the steps outlined by the city manager as the next part of the progression of this plan.
And that we pursue the consultant?
Correct.
Okay. All right, you have this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? Any questions? If not, would you call the roll, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Beer permit applications, Ms. Wright?
Mayor, we have several tonight. I'm going to start with a special event permit for the Murfreesboro Young Professionals. They're going to have a fundraiser October 12th at the Avenue, and they have met our requirements for a special event. Then I also have a change to allow beer on and off-premise at the Beer Depot, 2002 East Main Street. They do lack their building codes inspections, so when those are complete, I'd like to issue that permit. We have the Dollar General, who is going to be open a new location at 2144 Thompson Lane. They also lack their codes inspections, but they've gotten everything else done for us. And we have a name change, Brew U at 127 Southeast Broad Street. They also lack final codes inspections. When those are done, I would like permission to issue those permits. And then I have a permit for Level 3 at 114 South Maple Street. It's a new owner and a name change of the business, and they have satisfied all of our requirements, and I'd like to issue that permit upon your approval.
All right, you have these beer permits. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli.
Second.
Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You have the statements to be considered for payment before you. Are there any questions regarding those bills? And if not, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Second motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. Gilli. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
As to board and commission appointments, I'd like to reappoint to our disciplinary review board, Mr. Marion Bean and Mr. Doug Patrick. And I would like to recommend to you that Steve Benefield be added to the board, replacing Mr. Ray Ernest, who has been on the board for a number of years. I want to thank Mr. Ernest. And also the cable TV commission, I'd like to recommend that we reappoint Dennis O'Neill and Irene Porter. Those are my recommendations to you.
Move we accept the recommendations of the mayor.
I'll second that question.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Motion by Mr. Young. Mr. Gilli, seconds. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Other business from staff or the council? I have before me, and I hope each of you have already received, a memorandum regarding the city manager performance evaluation, which we ordinarily have in the fall. And I would propose that if you have any changes that you would like to make, additions, deletions to the form that we have been using, that if you would make that known to our human resources department, Mr. Godwin, so that we could make those changes before we send that form out. And I would suggest that if there, if we can come to some agreement at a future council meeting on the form to be used, that we would distribute the approved form to the council on October the 8th, that we would return the finished forms to the human resource department on October 22nd, and that we schedule a public meeting for the city manager evaluation on October the 29th. If you check your calendars to see if those dates are agreeable.
Mayor, with the exception of the 29th, I will actually be involved in a two-day jury trial that begins that day.
On the 28th or the 29th?
Start the 29th. I could do it on...
The 28th?
I could do the 28th. It's the 29th and 30th that I have conflict, Mayor. I apologize for that.
No, 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 that's fine. Would the 28th be all right, or would you rather go later in the week? We have a council meeting perhaps on the 31st. We could also do it on November the 1st, or we could do it back till October the 25th. We usually just do it on a Monday or a Tuesday and...
Can you repeat those dates, please, Mayor?
That we would send out the form to council members on October the 8th. We would return the forms by October the 22nd. That would give two weeks to fill it out. Then those forms would be returned, compiled, and given to the council before a public meeting, which could be on October the 28th.
They generally say you hire on Monday and fire on Friday. The 28th being a Monday, I think, I like that one.
All right, 10 o'clock in the morning at Room 218 on October the 28th. And if you have... And if you have things you want to change on the form, please get those as soon as possible to the human resource department, or otherwise the forms will be distributed to you on October the 8th. And Ms. Michota, if you would schedule that room 218 on the 28th of October, and publish the notice, please. Anything else? Council members, thank you for your attention tonight. Certainly, we appreciate Commissioner Bill Jones and look forward to going over the Bill Jones Bridge and driving at 40 miles an hour so we'll not encounter any new friends in the police department. And so, if there's nothing else, you're adjourned.